I'm showing six o'clock. The public call meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock PM Wednesday, July the 16th, 2014. Do I hear somebody make a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Have motion District Three? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Purpose of this meeting is to have a public hearing, 2014-2015 millage rate. The Henry County Board of Commissioners announced its intentions to increase the property tax that we levy this year by 11.56 percent over the rollback millage rate. All concerned citizens are invited to a public hearing on this to, this increase, to be held at the County Administration Building, 140 Henry Parkway, McDonough, Georgia, on July the 16th, 2014, at 9:00 AM and 6:00 o'clock PM. Time and place for additional public hearings and the adoption of the tax increase are at the County Administration Building, 140 Henry Parkway, McDonough, Georgia, July the 23rd, 2014, at 9:00 o'clock AM. This tentative increase will result in a millage rate of 14.497 mils for county unincorporated, 11.418 mils for McDonough, 14.497 mils for Stockbridge, 12.513 mils for Hampton, and 12.297 mils for Locust Grove. Without this tentative tax increase, the millage rate will be no more than 12.995 mils for county unincorporated, 10.38, correction, 10.398 mils for McDonough, 13.17 mils for Stockbridge, 10.745 mils for Hampton, 11.339 mils for Locust Grove. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $120,000 is $52.57. County unincorporated, $35.70. For McDonough, $46.34. For Stockbridge, $61.88. For Hampton, and 33.53 for Locust Grove, and the proposed tax increase for non-Homestead property with a fair market value of $325,000 is $195.26 for county unincorporated, 132.60 for McDonough, 172.12 for Stockbridge, 229 for Hampton, and 124.54 for Locust Grove. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion from the floor for the ground rules for this public hearing where everybody can be heard in a timely manner. I would like the board to consider approving. People coming up, not to exceed four minutes, we'll have the clock on, and also, part of that motion would be before somebody, someone, a citizen is allowed to, to speak twice, is make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak once. So if somebody would consider that, then that would be the ground rule.
So moved.
Have a motion District Four? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, the motion indicate with a reason of your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Thank you. At this point here, I would open the floor up for a citizen to speak, yea, nay, or indifference, and if he would be so kind as to come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given four minutes. Now, here's the ground rule. That's, it's unwritten. If someone gets up here and they start speaking, and one of the commissioners intervened, the clock comes off. That's a dialogue. So let's, if you see the clock going off when one of the commissioners get in a dialogue, asking questions to the applicant, not the applicant, that's an zoning issue, but the presenter, then the clock comes off. So having said that, state your name and address for record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jennifer Rosenbaum. My address is 1521 Lincoln Terrace, McDonough, Georgia, 30252. Is the microphone on? I'm sorry.
I don't think we have a volume.
Is it, okay, there we go.
Hey, we do now.
Can my time start over?
Can you give your address one more time?
Yes. It's 1521 Lincoln Terrace, McDonough, Georgia, 30252. That's in District One. Good. Gentlemen, tonight I'm here because I want to voice my concerns for this proposed increase, and this, pretty much all, I'm assuming, despite Mr. Holmes ran and voiced their campaign on conservative values, and values that your constituency appreciated and obviously liked well enough to vote for you. And these people, I'm assuming most of you thought were smart enough to be able to put you in office, but now their ideas maybe are not so smart that you're willing to put your vote on them. And I am here today to ask, to challenge you to do so. Mr., Commissioner Moss, this is specifically for you, since, you know, you directly represent myself, as well as you Chairman Smith, for representing the county, but I actually challenge all of the commissioners to look at what the people are coming here, what they're saying, how they're feeling about this. I have a couple of proposals, and I'm not even a commissioner, about things that we could do besides putting the burden of needing more money onto the homeowners. First of all, I worked in a hotel here in this county for at least two years, and I know that we were not using the hotel motel excise tax to its fullest capability. Counties in the metro area and counties around us all were at the maximum rate while we were at least a couple of percentage points lower than that. My suggestion would be is that if we need money, if we're having money that's not being met, we put that burden off on the visitors who are coming to this county, not the people who are paying the taxes to live here already and subject to the other taxes that are here. First of all, you know, I myself, you know, I'm a recently new homeowner, and I, my, my real estate agent didn't even remind us that we needed to file Homestead exemption. So this year, you guys are getting a lot of money from me, all of it, every penny. However, you know, I really, like I said, I just don't think it's fair that what we're doing now is that saying, you know, you're a homeowner, you need to live in Henry County, you're going to bear the burden. My first argument is, is that we passed a balanced budget, and I believe I heard yesterday, that was on May 22nd, is that correct? May 22nd? We pa, we passed a balanced budget, which means, and I worked for the Georgia House of Representatives, I'm in law school, I'm an educated person, I understand this. A balanced budget means that you looked at what money was coming in, what all revenue you were going to have, what all you needed to spend out, and you matched them up. And at the end of the day, at the end of the paper, it says zero. Is that a correct understanding? Yes, okay. Well, my concern is, is that we did that without this increase. So we had money lined up to go, go places before we even needed this increase. My concern is now, is, you know, where's this increase going to go? Where is this money coming from? Why do we need it? I, I understand from a conversation both with Commissioner Bowman and Commissioner Moss that this is going to pay back into the reserve because we took too much money out of the reserve. A counterargument to that is, why are we spending money that we didn't have? This means in the budget, we are allotting for things that we didn't have the money for, to the point that we had to take money out of our reserve, which means we didn't have the money to pay for it. And Commissioner Chairman, I, I follow your campaign really well, I know it really well. One, one of the main things you said was, if we can't pay for it, we don't need it. That's it, bottom line. And I stand by those values, and I am hoping that the conservatives on this board stand by those values. And I am a very active person in this community, I, I'm only Henry County Young Republicans, I do many other things, and I'm just here to let you know, you will be held accountable for your decision on July 23rd, and if it has anything to do, I just appreciate your consideration, and I request that you do not approve this millage rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chairman.
Next?
Can I ask one question?
Okay, yes.
I had one quick question. Because, because we had this problem earlier this morning at the 9:00 AM meeting, a lot of people, there's been some, some misunderstanding. We're not, I haven't heard anybody on the board talking about rate. The millage last year was 14.497. A lot of people, we had some people show up this morning thinking that we were asking to increase that millage above 14.497.
Yeah, no, sir, I understand that, that's not the case. I'll watch this morning.
So it's, it's the value of the increases. Okay. That, that's the big part of it, that I just want to make sure we got that clear, because there was some misunderstanding about that this morning.
Yes, sir, I understand. I actually heard you speak this morning, and I understand, I understood the argument as, as you made it this morning. My concern is that, if we're saying it's a formula, and we're saying that it's not really an increase, but because of the way it's set up, the state requires us to call it an increase. Well, my concern is, is, and I'm a law student, so I'm going to let you know, math was not my thing. I am not 100% on that, but I do know one thing, I knew algebra. And I can tell you that X plus Y equals Z, and those are our three variables. And I'm just simplifying it down to three because I'm not an accountant and I definitely don't do assessments. But what I do know is if we say our, our assessment value is X, and we say our millage rate is Y, if you fluctuate X or Y, that changes Z either, either direction. We, we're not changing Y this time, but we, you know, X changed. So we're going to see an increase across the board, no matter what, I understand that. My concern is that if we pass this, my millage rate's going to be 14.89, I think?
No, 14, last year was 14.497. We haven't decided what it's going to be yet.
Right. Well, last year, that's what mine was. Well, according to the notice that you put out, if this doesn't pass, my millage rate would be 12 point something, which inherently, from 12 to 14, I mean, that's an increase. Because if this wasn't passed, I wouldn't be paying, I wouldn't have the 14 millage rate, I'd have the 12.
And then, the other thing, I didn't want to interrupt you when you were speaking, but balanced budget, because it, what was approved with the budget back on May 22nd, that voted, that passed 6-0, was that we were going to take $6.3 million out of reserves.
That's correct.
So that, I, I think there's been a little misunderstanding, saying that it was a balanced budget without what, what, whatever happens, it's not that we are spending above and beyond, it's just that we've been hitting the cash reserves for the last five to six years.
Right.
So it's, it's just lowering how much we're taking, because the, the rainy day fund, the balance fund, has, we've kind of been taking a little bit out of savings every year. And believe me, I don't want to, I don't want to tax anybody. I mean, the, the, the easy thing is to roll this thing back, but I worry about the bond ratings and some of the other things that impact us, that I know you're very well aware of too, because the cities are also at the mercy of what we do and how well we financially manage the assets. I, I read in an article yesterday that the Standard and Poor's Rating Agency is prepared to pay the federal government over a billion dollars to settle some of the discrepancies that they got hit with because the, the collapse in the rating agencies. I'm worried that this, all the rating agencies, the credit rating agencies, gave us a break during the downturn, all government agencies, because they knew that this is the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression, that now that they're settling with the, the federal government on some of their malpractices of the past, they're going to sharpen their pencils, and in a year, the first year that revenue actually increased because property values have increased, I'm worried they're going to come to us and see that we're still pulling out the rainy day fund and consider that not good financial management, when, I can tell you, next year, we have, we have multiple fire stations coming onboard, we have fire, I mean, we're going to completely replace some of the equipment that is over 18 years old, that only has a life expectancy of 12 years. I want to give every dime as much as possible, and I think we're set up, what my goal would be, and I'm just speaking as an individual commissioner, but I think there are other commissioners that would echo this, is I think we, we manage this in a way that we can roll this millage back over the coming years, as we continue to do it, and even give back some this year. But to take it down to 12, 12 percent, or the, the 12 millage, I, I just don't know if I can do that, and I love the county too much to let us not catch up on some of the things that we've been pulling out of cash reserves for. But, but, 12.992.
13, I think.
So, but thank you for coming tonight and speaking to us.
Yes, sir.
I thought you did a really good job.
And thank you. And I just have one quick question. I know my time is up, and I know somebody else needs to speak, but may I respond to that?
Sure, sure.
Okay. And I understand, I love Henry County too, and to be honest, I mean, a lot of people in Henry County know this about me, it's not anything I'm ashamed of, but I grew up in Henry County, but I grew up in defect in Henry County. I was in defect until the day I turned 18. I understand, I, I worked my tail off to be where I am, and I understand the value of, you know, being raised here, you know, living here, the quality of life here, I understand all those things, and I appreciate them, I would think just as much or even more than some of the people who live here. My concern is, is that, I, I, I share those same exact feelings. I'm worried that our bond ratings won't be as good, I'm worried that, you know, people won't look at Henry County as good, I understand that. I just disagree where I think that the burden should be put onto the homeowner. I'm saying that my argument is that we find ways to put that burden onto the visitors, the tourists that come here, the movie people who come here. We have the U, the USSA baseball tournament here every year, and I know that because I used to work at a hotel that housed all those people. One thing we're missing out on is companies like Norfolk Southern, companies, the other factories around here, they housed their trainees in our hotels. That, you know, these are businesses that have to pay those hotel fees because they need their people here, regardless of whether the hotel motel excise percentage is five or it's the maximum, they have to pay that either way. I'm saying we explore other options, like the hotel motel excise tax and increasing it to its maximum, and putting that burden off on visitors. I'm just, I think that, and even if you appreciate Henry County as much as you say you do, and I'm sure you, you know, you, you've come to love here, you love this home, I think that you would feel the burden that we as a community, we felt the burden long enough. And if we're going to be hosting these big events and having them take over our parks where our citizens can't even be in them for two weeks because of the big tournament, that they might as well pay for it. Because they don't, and you know, and that, they should also pay for the hotels and pay more in that, pay the excise, the excise tax. I, I just don't understand, I think that we have the same base level, but my natural instinct is to put that burden off onto the visitors and tourists and people who are coming to our county, and your natural instinct is to put it on the homeowners.
Well, and, and I don't want to get into an adversarial relationship, because I think we're saying the same thing, I mean, that's why I'm so thankful we had the SPOLOST pass, and I think it's done a good job. I will tell you, the hotel motel tax though has, has to be used in specific ways. The thing I found is so frustrating, and as I even talked about, and you saw it this morning, governmental accounting puts so many strings and restrictions on everything. I had to explain for years the difference between general funds, SPOLOST funds. A lot of what you're saying is right on, and I agree with you, except for that there's so many strings of restriction put on how you can spend those different pots of money, that it, you can't just increase one, and then that's going to immediately relieve this one. And that's, that's what's been frustrating, and I think we try to do as good of a job of explaining, and, and I have no doubt, and congratulations, I, I think it's awesome. I'm also, I K through 12 right here, graduate of Henry County High School, I think it's awesome what you've accomplished. So, so thank you for even coming out here, and I think it's great what you're accomplishing in life, too.
Right. Well, I appreciate your time. Mr. Moss, I really hope you consider my thoughts, and I really hope you think about those on July 23rd. Just so you know, I do hold, you know, each one of you accountable, to be accountable to your constituency. And just a final thought, you know, towards Mr. Preston, I appreciate, you know, going back and forth, I think maybe our logic is just a little bit different here. My final comment would just be is, you know, I'm a common citizen, and I don't get to be behind the desk and see everything that we have, and what money can go where, and what can be spent where, and I can think of ideas of how to pass the burden. So I expect you all, having all that extra information that I don't have, to, to find those same things or other ideas. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Back here. Next? Anybody like to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Ron Moon. I live at 4041 Jodeco Road, Stockbridge. I'm in District Two. And my wife Debbie and I have two properties in Henry County. The home that we live in on Jodeco Road, and also a property in the city of McDonough. In this past year, our property value has increased about 25 percent, which is about $60,000 in the two properties. When we saw the increase in the assessed value, I guess we just assumed that you, the Board of Commissioners, would cut the millage rate to work, to work hard to cut the millage rate to compensate for any increase in value. Now, we've had, just a little background, we've had a small business for many years, and we've had a tough time during these, these difficult economies, and we've had to adjust our own budgets in these difficult times to get by with, with less than we had before. And I don't believe a government really is any different. And we're still operating, so we just feel like that the board has to reevaluate the budget, look at the expenses versus the income, and make hard decisions to reduce the spending and reduce the tax burden on the Henry County property owners. I know, being a county commissioner is a tough, tough job. You all know that. You've been doing it, and you know how tough it can be. And I know it, because I was a county commissioner in metro Atlanta many years ago, in a growing county, and it's tough, and I remember that. One thing you have to remember tonight, if you don't cut the millage rate based on, if all the increases in the county property increases are, are around what we have been increased, that if you don't cut the millage rate substantially, then you're going to create a tax increase. I just think you're going to have to look hard to do spending and make the necessary cuts to reduce the millage rate. The, that's the difficult thing to do, is, is cut it to, to cut the millage rate. The easy thing to do is to raise the millage rate or leave it the same, and it'll be difficult, but, you know, for those that plan to continue their careers, the hope would be that you just, your constituents, between now and the next election, will just forget the way you voted tonight. And just remember that if you, if you don't cut the millage rate substantially based on the increases, then you are raising taxes. And we need to cut, go with the, go with the difficult choice and cut hard for the property owners of Henry County, and just don't go the easy route. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
Katie Queen, 30 Woolsey Road, Hampton. When the, when the budget was passed, what millage rate was it passed on?
Equivalent to 12.995.
Okay, so we have a budget that was passed on a 12.99, but yet we're, we're looking at a 14.9?
14.497.
About $7 million more?
Well, the millage wasn't known at that point. We took the, the, the 12.9 is something that was released in the last week or so. I mean, that's, so that, that's, we didn't know where the actual tax digest was going to come in at. So I think the, when I-
But you knew the assessed property values at that point?
No. I mean, that's all we've got, we had to, we, the budget is created without knowing completely, we have guidance, but we don't know exactly where the tax digresses go roll out when we create, when the budgets. It's just, we have to get, take an estimate, and that's how we, we roll it forward.
Okay, so now the assessments are out, and we've got 12.95, where would that leave us with the budget? Would it leave us on target? Would it leave us over, under? Where would it leave us?
It'd be unfunded, it'd, there'd be $6.3 million that'd have to come from cash reserves.
So we wouldn't come in-
We've already took this 6.1 million out of cash reserve to make the balance, the budget balance. The, the budget is balancing, was on May the 22nd.
So we have, we had a balanced budget on May 22nd?
That's correct.
Then we got a tax assessment, that our property values rose, so even at 12.95, we would be paying more in taxes than what we paid last year, correct? Because last year, our properties plummeted. So this year, they rose. Correct?
That's the whole calculation of the 12.9, is it rolls it back to where you get the exact same, well, supposed to be the same revenue, it's the real property revenue, but as we heard this morning from David, because the motor vehicle revenue is lower, we would actually end up being less 30 grand? We'd actually end up, if we taxed, rolling it back to 12.9, as Commissioner Bowman mentioned, we'd actually end up with less than 300,000 than we did last year.
So even by jumping it to 14.95, that's not a necessary jump?
Well, last year-
Let me explain how we get to the 12.993. The board didn't generate that number. It ended up being that number, okay? When staff started the new budget, they were instructed to do the, the same budget, basically, because the economy has not picked up that much as we knew it, and to, to establish a budget that would use the same amount of ad valour and tax collected last year as this year. So basically, roughly, you're talking about $65 million. Okay, last year, 14.497 mils generated roughly $65 million. Okay, so if you start with that 65 million, you design a budget, the budget is balanced. Now, we had $35 million in what they call fund balance, which is reserved. All 35,000 of that fund balance is unreserved. What that means is that it's unreserved, so that way you could tap in on it. Now, just, and I explained this this morning. For an example, our monthly cash flow is about $10 million. Okay, the rough months for our budget, like any budget in a, in a government, in our case, based on our fiscal budget, is August, September, and October. Okay, because we run out of money. Okay, so if you take the 35 million that we had, the only reason we tapped in at 6.1 million is the fact we gave all our employees a 2% raise, and then starting January of 2015, all the first responders, police, fire EMSs will get another 2%. So that's basically, almost exclusively, where that 6.1 came from. But we had 35 million, so what that done, if you just roughly take 35 million and you take the six, that gives you 29 million. So to get through August, September, and October, you got $29 million, okay? Normally, it takes about $10 million a month, but this $6 million that we allocated to make the budget balance is not going to be taken out July the 1st. It was not taken out July the 1st. Half of it will be paid out over six months, and that 2%. Okay, the other part will be paid out starting in January. Okay, now, this is why, in, in October, we're all hungry, and in the first six weeks, after November, probably 80, 90 percent of all the tax be collected, then we can be wearing fur coats, because we have nothing, then we get it all, because we're going, within about six weeks, we're going to get probably 90 percent of the 65 million. But we have to program it to where, that's got to last until we get back to the cycle. So the, the, the budget was balanced, taking 6 million from fund balance. Okay, so having said that, fund balance is your savings. So-
Correct.
I, I don't know if I answered that question or not, but it's the best I can do.
Just a little bit, is that, is, is I think May 31st- It's, May 30th, it's the 35 million that you're mentioning, but June 30th, which is the end of the, the actual year, it's, it's 32 million, but then we're going to use 6 million, so we'd start next year with 26 million, and as Chairman just mentioned, we live off 10 million a month, we wouldn't even have the three months. And that's the problem. I'm worried about the bond rating and how that all plays out, and then you also build upon yourself, because next year, we've got additional fire stations, which I'm happy to say a lot, some of them are in District Two, as well as the senior center hopefully coming online.
And those are covered by SPOLOST?
Not that, not the carrying cost. To put the people in the fire stations is about $1.2 million per fire station per year. You can buy the equipment in the building with the SPOLOST, but you can't pay for the people with SPOLOST. That's, that's those different buckets of funds. Same thing with the senior center, we can build the building, but to keep the lights on, we've got to pay for that out of general funds. And that's what, we're just, and the ISO ratings on the insurance rates, and that's why I explained this morning, we've had a lot of citizens contact us because their homeowner's insurance has gone up, because the, the insurance companies have realized, they used to do as the bird flies to figure out your five mile radius for your insurance ratings on fire safety. They've now gotten where they use GPS, and they realize, you know, we don't go as the bird flies, we actually go down roads. So we're trying to get more fire stations, because it's not just a financial thing, it's a safety thing. There's a reason the actuaries come in and raise your insurance rates, because they consider, and that's our fundamental concern, is how do we make sure that we're getting the fire stations, getting the police officers, because our turnover rate in, in just the entire county is 12%. That's, it's three to four times higher than the actual turnover. And I think a lot of that has to do with some of the pay issues we have with our law enforcement, and that's why, it really stinks. I'll tell you, sitting up here, nobody, I could, nobody wants to do anything except for make sure that we protect the citizens from the fundamentals of what we're paid for. I mean, that's one of the things that, I think that the first person who spoke, she was right, I'd love to see us get more businesses, more jobs, because that stuff, they pay, you can get more tax revenue instead of being completely, we're so addicted to the residential side of tax digest, that it, it puts too much burden on the taxpayers.
Exactly.
And we're working on trying to fix that, but we've got to, we came through 2008 and 2009, and my pledge is, I want to start rolling it back. I just, I don't know if I can responsibly roll it all the way back with some of these issues I've talked about with the fire stations and the other things that are coming online in the next few months.
It just seems, with the way that property values have risen, because I know what ours did, even rolling it back to 13, you would have more than enough.
The additional generates 6.8, somewhere in that, that range?
If you adopt the 14.497, then the revenue would be 7.1 anticipated million.
Okay. So that's, that's the difference.
And by having that kind of millage rate, what is it going to do to the home sales in Henry County?
I, I mean, assuming that, because we kept, if you use the same millage, and that's- and 2009, and my pledge is I want to start rolling it back. I just, I don't know if I can responsibly roll it all the way back with some of these issues I've talked about with the fire stations and the other things that are coming online in the next few months.
It just seems with the way that property values have risen, because I know what ours did, even rolling it back to 13, you would have more than enough.
The additional generates 6.8, somewhere in that, that range?
If you adopt the 14.497, then the revenue would be 7.1 anticipated million.
Okay. So that's, that's the difference.
And by having that kind of millage rate, what is it going to do to the home sales in Henry County?
I, I mean, assuming that, because we kept, if you use the same millage, and that's what the assessments were sent out as assuming the same millage, I will tell you, I think your assessment, I mean, the actual bill is going to be lower, because that was based off of last year's number.
I didn't ask bills, I said home sales. What is that going to do to the sales of new homes in Henry County?
I can read you the permit starts, I've got the actual permit starts for the last year.
I'm not talking about permits, I'm talking about sales.
But they're kind of one, I mean, the amount of construction and existing, I mean, they're, they're not completely the same, because the new homes is different than existing home sales. But we are seeing rapid growth back in the county, and I don't know that that necessarily will impact that.
Well, we saw that before, and we know where that led us. So I don't put much faith in that. But my point is, we've made it before, without putting it on the backs of the citizens, without putting it on the backs of the homeowners. And we can do it again, but it's got to start up there, not back here.
And, and I completely agree, but I think the budget and the funding of the budget are completely connected. So if there was, and this is, I voted against the millage increase back in 2012, but I also voted against the budget in 2012. I think to, to have a 6-0 vote for the budget and then not fund the budget and try to separate those two votes is a little different.
By going to the 4.9, you're not only, you're not only funding the budget, you're overfunding the budget.
No, how, but there's no overfunding.
Because you're, it, it's going to be what, seven, 6.8 million over?
No, we're taking out of the cash reserves this year. That we're, we're taking, it starts at 32, if we go where we are, we will be at 26 at the end of the year. Our rainy day fund will go down $6 million. There's no over, I mean, if there is an overfund, I'll give that portion, I don't mind working towards, that's what I think a good compromise is, making sure that we're working on a truly balanced budget instead of getting into the rainy day fund.
Mr. Walker, can you explain that one more time?
The, the fund balance, the fund balance figure right now is $32,285,000.
Can you speak up to-
The choice is really, when you look at the 127 million dollar budget, there's about a 6.1 or 6.3 million dollar shortfall. We've got a decision to make. You either take the money out of the fund balance and run the fund balance down to where we only have about a two month plus a couple of week reserve, or we roll the millage rate back a little bit to cover that 6.1, so we keep our savings account, but we balance the budget. That's really the choice.
As of today, at this point in time with the way things are and the way things are going, my choice would be to roll it back and take a chance on the savings. That's what we're having to do in the real world. And I think the county needs to, to buckle down and do the same.
Well, let me, let me, let me make a comment when you say the real world.
Yes.
Let's talk about public safety in, in the real world. The real world, when you dial 911, you expect a police officer, or an ambulance, or firefighter to show up to help you pretty quickly.
And living in the city of Hampton, they do, because we pay for it.
But that's what you expect?
Yes.
When the average age of the vehicle fleet, when the average age of the vehicle fleet in the county is 9.73 years and over 100,000 miles, when we have over 150 cars in the uniform police division of the county police department, and we only have 18, 18 serviceable computers out of 150 cars. And we bought some more last night, thank God. But when you dial 911, in the real world, you expect timely service. When you keep allowing cars to be 10, 11, 12 years, you can only put paint and glue on these things for so long. You can only have a life expectancy on a bulletproof vest, or a weapon, or a computer for so long. Eventually, you've got to replace that stuff. So the real world is, is we're trying to create a condition so that when you need help, we don't give you an IOU because we don't have what we need. And I think that's what the commissioner is getting to. If you look at our budget and what we spend, we're in the, somewhere in the neighborhood of 60-something percent of our entire budget goes to public safety, which we hope is a direct benefit to you.
You're talking to somebody who lives in the city of Hampton.
Do you have your own ambulance service?
We do not have our own ambulance service, we have our own police department.
You rely on the county, and, and when I'm telling you, the aging fleet is such that we're welding together ambulances, and we put a new ambulance near you in the county this year, but unfortunately, we can't fully man it. We've only got three people assigned, it's part-time, it's not even full-time. Wouldn't you like a full-time ambulance crew to assist you should you dial 911?
Well, how about we look at some of the properties that we have and get rid of them? Why do we need a golf course? Is it losing money, is it making money?
Well, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. I, I mean, I don't know of any of the commissioners or that we're, once you scramble an egg, I don't think we can unscramble it. I don't think that, no, I don't think that when you expect an ambulance to show up to your house, we say, "I'm sorry, we couldn't be there because we got a golf course." That's not an acceptable answer to you. It's not an acceptable to answer to us.
Is it even on the market? Is the golf course even on the market? Has it even been looked at, at getting rid of some of the property that we don't need, that we're paying for monthly, that we could take that money and put it somewhere else?
If it's my turn to speak, we, we have looked, we have looked at the golf course, and the lease for the golf course is expiring in the next few months. We still owe varying figures from 12 million to a little bit higher than that on the golf course. If we sold the golf course today, I venture to say we wouldn't get $2 million for it. So let's say we sell it. We've still got a $10 million bill to pay for the next 20-something years, and you own nothing. Now, I don't think that's a good business decision.
There are people in the real world that have had to walk away from their homes, that have had to do short sales, because they can't make a mortgage payment. Raising this is going to add to that, it's not going to take away from it. So you tell me about a golf course that will make $2 million, that you can sell for $2 million, and you still owe 10 on it?
At least.
Sounds like it was a bad deal to start with.
But we can't unscramble that egg, we already own it.
There are other things that can be done. Look harder. Just look again. Before you go and make a decision, talk to your constituents. Some of them showed up. Some of these folks, most of these folks I know, and I know what they've been through, and they know what we've been through. And I know in the city of Hampton, we struggled, but we made it. And we don't have a property tax. So there are ways to do it. So please, think about them, think about the people that still need to come here. You're building all these houses, but what good is it going to be if nobody wants to buy them because the millage rate's too high? And all they've become is rental property. Then we just have a revolving county, and that's not going to help us either. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioner, is this, is this mic on?
We need to cut that on, I don't think it's on. It's on?
Good evening.
Oh yeah, it's on.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Catherine Gilbert. I'm a resident of Stockbridge at 120 Willow Hill Lane in the Winsong Plantation subdivision. I'm here to say that I want to congratulate you all for the job that you have done, and I want to congratulate the people that went before you that have kept this county in reasonable fiscal, fiscal shape. That doesn't, that's not easy to do. And the reserve funds that we have are because of good fiscal management. Reserve funds, people don't understand, but it's, it's more than just the taxpayer. If we want to bring good economic development with jobs and higher commercial tax rates to take the burden off of our citizens, we must maintain a good bond rating, because developers, people that want to come into our community, are going to look at that. They're going to see that we have good fiscal management. If they see that we are drawing down our reserve funds and that our bond rating is going down, they will understand that we don't have good fiscal management. We need to rebuild those reserve funds. My property value, when I, I purchased my home seven, 16 years ago for $169,000, it rose over a period of, of years to as much as $210,000 on, on the assessed valuation on my property tax bill. It dropped as far as $100,000 in the, the, the economy that we had. It's going up again, it's up to $135,000. Yeah, I'm going to have to take a hit in my pocket on my taxes. I will gladly bite that bullet. And I think there are other citizens who understand that as well. I encourage you to do what must be done to make the wise fiscal choices, to fund this county, to maintain our bond rating, so that we can in fact attract the kind of economic development that will grow this county into the queen of the Atlanta region, which is where it should be. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Judy Peterson, I live out, near Lake Dow. I want to tell you first of all, pardon, is this okay? First of all, I want to tell you, I've had two extractions today and three implants, so I'm a little testy tonight. And I just got notice that, of this meeting a couple of hours ago. I have several points that I would like to bring up. Number one, we all have to tighten our belts, and the county must also. I live on a street that is in perfectly good order, and I was notified a couple of months ago that it's going to be repaved. It's a county street, it's a subdivision street, so there shouldn't probably be any state funds involved or whatever. Why do we have to do that? Why can't we take those kinds of items, excuse me, I'm full of pain pills, and pull it back? You know, those are ways, or that's a small way, but it's an idea, to pull back some of this money that you're wanting to spend on these other programs. Now, I don't know if in the new budget, because I have not seen it, if you have new programs that are being involved, that you're adding new programs. We cannot afford it at this time. The people of Henry County and of the United States, really, are really pressed, and they're really pressed because of taxes. When you raise taxes, it just really hurts commerce as well. Okay, Katie Queen brought up, you know, a possible source of funds, and that's the golf course. And possibly the airport, I don't know what status that's in, but I know there was a big, you know, conflict over that. Now, Mr. Walker was talking about, don't unscramble eggs, but what I think the people of Henry County are saying is quit laying goose eggs, quit going out and getting more of these projects that we have to pay for that are not making any money. We look at the golf course, and I think, and it's only from a memory, probably, what, 20 million? What did we pay for that golf course?
22.3.
22.3 million. Now, that's a bad business deal, any way you look at it, because you're only getting, what, $24,000 in rent off from it? Now, that is a bad deal. Why can't we sell that? Give it to somebody who might be able to market that in a different way than just running it through and getting, did you say 2 million out of it, Mr. Walker? I'd like to, I'm a Realtor, I'd like to take a shot at selling that, you know, give me a chance in, in selling it. But, you know, what, what's happened with our political apparatus, I guess you might say, is that the unlimited funds, I mean, we've looked at this time and time again, the times that I've gotten involved a little bit in the county, and just spending too much money on projects that just don't make any money. They're not a good project. And I don't know why we buy things like the airport when we had one, 25 miles away, you know? There's too much going on. We can pull back on a lot of these things and save the money and stop this raising of the millage rate. And I agree that since property values have gone up, you've got to pull back somewhere else and find the money, maybe out of roads that don't need it. My subdivision, like I said earlier, does not need to be repaved, it's a really good road. But there it is. So why are we doing that? Okay, anyway, some of the things that you already have in the budget, and I have not seen it, I think we should, or you should look, at being able to roll back some of those commitments. There should be a number of things in there that you could do. Okay, let's see, my other notes. Okay, just kind of a final thought, is, you know, the, the people here are just being taxed to our destruction, and we're just going the wrong direction. Please look in your budgets, or budget, and pull back some of these things that just don't belong there, or we could do without. That's what we're asking you to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I need to make a comment, I have no relation to the lady. It just spoke, I'm going to make a general comment.
Yes, sir. I yield the floor.
Number one, the golf course property was purchased, as we bought dirt that a golf course happened to be on. That property was purchased when economics were good, when Atlanta came down and told us we'd be 400,000 people by the year 2030. We bought it because we knew that any government facility, such as the court systems or anything else, has to be located within the county seat, the city limits. This was the only piece of property that would have been available at that time when we purchased it. Once again, we bought a piece of property, just happened to have a golf course on it. Yes, it would sell for $2 million today, maybe 3 million, maybe 5 million. But at the end of the day, we, we, at that time, like I said, Jason Harper was the chair, we've had one other chair and went to another chair, you know, I mean, the golf course, you can't sell it right now and get anything, you couldn't get what we paid for it out. You know, you could put an auction out on it and put a reserve fund on it, but you know, when we bought that thing, one mill was $6 million. One mill a couple of years ago was under 4. One mill today is just a little over 4, like 4.1, 4.2. So the golf course was not what we purchased. That's never going to get through to some of the people's mind, because we bought dirt that a golf course happened to be on. And that being said, the other thing is unless I'm wrong, and I could be, because I've been more than once, I think the airport's operating in the black, or it has operated in the black. So I don't see that as a drain. We paid $2.7 million for $17 million worth of property that's located in Henry County, that we probably should have took it when it was offered to us for free. But at that time, the commissioners that were on the board elected not to take it. We didn't buy it to make money on it, we bought it for, for, for development purposes, for economic development for the county, so that, that we could get more commercial and more things into the county that would relieve some of the burden on all of the taxpayers within the county. So having said that, I'd like to, just, I, I just felt like I needed to comment on it. I know that we've heard that same story probably 100 times in the last couple of years with the downturn in the economy. But anyway, I yield the floor, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Before we hear the next speaker, what I'd like to do is announce that, I know some people said they hadn't had an opportunity to look at the budget. If you go to our webpage, homepage, if you look over in the right-hand column down there, you, you can tap in on the budget. The 2014-2015 budget is on the front page, and it says 2014-2015 budget, okay? Having said that, good evening.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for always giving us the opportunity to come and speak. I am James Stephen Cash, I am the Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth. I reside at 2,000 Flat Rock Road in Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm a lifelong Henry County citizen. You know, we're hearing a lot of gloom and doom, a lot of gloom and doom as we talk about this. You know, the chief tax appraiser came to our luncheon about three months ago and says our valuations were going to go up an average of 30, some, some odd 30%. That came from Mr. Charlie Riddick at that time. And I'm not up here, I, I want to tell you, I'm not up here to say your job's in jeopardy. I'm not up here to say, roll it back, keep it, push it forward. I just want to tell you that things not as bad as they appear to be in our county. Things are not as bad. Things are not as bad. I even think, and this is my projection, that we might see a windfall, a windfall at a certain time, because things are coming, are going so well. If you look, if you take a moment and look at the paper that I gave you, it shows the June 2025.
Will you look at these up on there, please? For the audience could see what we're seeing. You can use my copy if you don't have another copy.
I got one, Ray. My time is rattling off.
I'm gonna add 20 seconds to that.
Okay. I keep up with the, keep up with housing, and that's a passion for me. I keep up with what's going on in housing in Henry County. So last year, 2013, we recognized 210 percent increase in residential housing, new housing. This year, as of June, we're at 30, 39 percent increase. So I'm projecting by the end of the year, if you see it, the 2014, 418, I think we're gonna have 1,000 applications for housing permits. Now, if you look at the other paper that I gave you, I was with, I called National Association of Home Builders and got these numbers from them. If we do 1,000 new permits in 2014, we're gonna generate 2,448 jobs in Henry County. 1,000 new single-family permits, we're gonna generate 79.4 million wages paid. 1,000 new single-family homes contributes more than 42 million in federal, state, and local tax revenue and fees. This is Henry County. 1,000 new single-family homes will generate 1.7 million in impact fees. And you can see the impact fees, well, you can't see it there, but 205,000 for libraries, 838,000 for parks and recs, 255 for fire protection, 169.5 for sheriff, 110, 500 police. This is just residential. Commercial will double that. Will double that. Besides that, SPOS will recognize something between 30 and 30, 33 million dollars of revenue for this first year. I see a lot of money coming our way. I see a lot of funds. So I want you to be circumspect when you mill this over, whatever you're gonna do with it. But look at it carefully. Look at what's in the future. Do some projections, and if I can help you with these, I'd be glad to. But I'm there. So, thank you so much, Commissioners. I think I'm gonna go play some golf over there now.
Okay, I think we have, you have a question?
You have on this paper that I really want to point out. One is, is in 2005 and 2006, when we were looking at something over here that you want to go play on, we had single-family permits, 2,939, the 2006, 2,207. Now, let's just kind of jump forward to eight, nine, and 10, 314, 172. 2010, 199. 2011, 169. 2012, 173. And 2013, 538. So we're seeing that uptick in the economy, but a lot of this may not hit the budget until next year, and next year should be a lot better than this year. I mean, I know that I, you know, I watch both of them. I watch Fox and I watch ABC, and I don't, at the end of the day, I don't believe either one of them, but, you know, we do see the economy ticking up. We see it here in Henry County. I see it because of the business that I'm in. And also, Steve, I mean, the commercial permits hit their high in 2007, but five and six, one was 101, one was 83, and I'm seeing now 151 on the commercial permits. We really need more of that. But I mean, I, you know, from the information that you give us, you know, things are moving forward, and I, I mean, this is bill and permit analysis, so I'm assuming that you got that from?
Straight from the bill and department.
Okay, perfect.
If I can, with the commercial, if you look at 2007, it's got a asterisk above there, 300. At this time, the building department started counting commercial permits separately or differently. If it was a strip mall, they would only count it as one prior. Now, the strip mall was counted, if it had four units in it, it was counted as four permits. That's the difference on that.
Right.
All right? And you see that, you know, our values didn't go down overnight. They went down incrementally. So I just don't know if you want to look at the taxes going up all at one time, so that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, I'm, are we on? Okay. I'm Debbie Moon, live at 4041 Jodico Road in Stockbridge. I didn't plan on coming up here, but I just made some notes as I was listening to people. And I did some quick calculations based on the valuation of one of our properties and the millage rate as it was. I came up to about $440 property taxes based on the new proposed valuation, even at 12.99 percent. We would have an increase in property taxes for that particular property. So even lowering it to 12.99, which I know Mr. Preston said would be difficult for him to do, we would still have an increase. And I know most of you were elected on a platform of being conservatives and not raising taxes and looking at cutting the budget, and I think you still need to continue along those lines that you told us that you would do. You mentioned that you have a budget that was balanced, but I don't know how you consider a budget to be balanced when you're taking money out of reserves. That doesn't make sense to me. And then, Mr. Walker, he said something about two choices, I think, maybe taking money out of reserves, or I don't remember the other one, but I didn't hear him say choice number three, which is reduce the budget. It looks to me like you still need to continue to do cuts on the budget. Somebody mentioned the senior center. Has construction been started on the senior center yet? No? I mean, if you don't have the money to maintain it after it's constructed, to me, you should not build it. I mean, that just makes sense. To me, the senior center would be nice, but it's frivolous, and at this point in time, we do not have the money for frivolous expenditures, such as the senior center. I'm a senior, I'm sure probably I'd enjoy it, but I would also enjoy in addition to my home, but I can't afford that either. And, let me see, I think that's all I had. Now, somebody did say we passed the SPOS so that we can do improvements to keep our property taxes from being increased, but, as you said, the downside is a lot of these SPOS improvements, we have expenditures to maintain them, and we just don't have the money to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to just add that I think District 2 is in a weird precarious situation, the fact that we've had some turnover in the Commissioner's side. And I know when I first came on board, one of the first things I noticed is that our fire protection was very limited. We didn't have some of the quality-of-life features that some of the other districts had, like the senior center, so it had been something that had been promised for over a decade, starting at SPOS 2, SPOS 3, and then we're in SPOS 4. And that's what I was inherited. And the thing is, is that I was trying to figure out, how do I represent District 2 to get them the services, the world-class services that we get, that I want all of Henry County to have? And part of that is public safety, taking care of the fire, taking care of the police, but also making sure that our citizens do have active things. And what we voted for is not only, it's a joint senior slash rec center, it's gonna be a beautiful thing. We've even just recently worked on finding a very centralized location. And you bring up a great point, Mrs. Moon, and I apologize, because, you know, the last thing I want to do is disappoint you and Ron, but these are the things, that if we cut the fire stations, if we cut the senior centers, I think we continue on, on the path where the west of 75 is not going to have the same resources as amenities other areas are. And I think Steve was correct, Mr. Cash was correct, is that things are getting significantly better in the economy, and I'm trying to do some vision planning to make sure that we get the public safety, to get the fire safety, give the citizens the resources that make it happy to live in District 2. And part of that is having faith that we're gonna continue. I think Commissioner Bowman was right on, this is a hard budget year, because everything is delayed by 12 to 18 months. You build a brand-new house, you pay property taxes on the land the first year. It's only in year two that you pay off of the increased, improved value. So a lot of these new constructions aren't, is not even impacting our tax digest yet. That's going to happen. I think better days are ahead. I'm working on projects that I can't talk about publicly, that I'm hoping will get more employment, get more businesses. Take property that's only valued at 1,000 to 2,000 an acre, and let's turn it into something where it's valued at 300,000, and businesses are paying more taxes to help take the burden off you taxpayers. I don't want to raise your taxes. I can promise you, I pay taxes just like everybody else does, but this is the hard part, is how do you balance making sure that we serve the citizens with public safety, as well as the amenities that make it a great world-class place to live, and not also disappoint the voters? And that's what, I completely agree, maybe we should have sharpened the pencil greater on the budget hearing. That's why, if you go back and watch last year's budget, watch this year's budget, I'll ask how we created this budget. Go watch last year's budget, because I knew it was a year before was an election year, it was a free and clear year. I said, let's modernize, let's talk about the insurance and other things, and I asked, and I said, is this the budget that the other board members want? And maybe we should have sharpened the pencil more, but I'm trying to figure out how we, instead of looking in the rearview mirror, how we proceed forward, and if that's the mandate, I don't know if public safety is where you want us to cut. And I don't know if some of those amenities that make it a better place, but we'll work on that, and I'm just sorry I disappointed you, I really am.
Next.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lisa McGarrett, and I live at 100 Woodhawk Lane in Stockbridge. I believe I'm District 4. You'll have to pardon me, I have ADHD, so I may get ahead of myself. I don't know anything about millage rates and math and all that, I've never been real good at that, but I do know that we still have things that are boarded up. We still have a lot of businesses that's went under. We have them open up, especially restaurants, and then they go right back under again, because you need at least a million bucks when you're starting to open up a restaurant sitting in reserve. We're still in a recession. We have not, and I know people want to say that we've come out of it, but we haven't, because you can look around in certain areas, and we haven't. We've got houses that are sitting there that, they're still sitting there empty. Up at 138, and in some of those areas, it, we've had stuff that's been boarded up. We've got the Long John Silvers that sat there for years, still sitting there, boarded up. And I don't think we're talking about doom and gloom. I don't think they are talking about doom and gloom. I think they're trying to be careful. The county wants to be careful. We would want a lot of business and a lot more people coming into the county and more housing, but what happens when you do that? We've done that before, and look where we wound up, because you never know when you're gonna get the brakes put on. No one ever knows when that's coming. And as far as taxes, some people have to pay those taxes out of their pocket. Now, some of it's built into escrow, but we pay them out of our pocket. We just have to write a check for that huge amount. And there's a lot of people that's still struggling. There's a lot of people that are still going into foreclosure. That just hasn't ended. You know, I'd like to say it had, and we're on the road to recovery, but I think people are really trying to be cautious, because they don't want all that to happen again, because I had a lot of friends or a lot of people that I knew, and I looked in the paper, and their house was going into foreclosure. And I was really sick at night thinking about it, because it could happen to anybody at any time. So raising taxes, I think I'd hold that off. At least look at the economy for a couple more years and see how it grows. But just because you're putting a senior citizens center or senior citizens place up there on 138, just because we have a Krispy Kreme, which I definitely would enjoy every day, it doesn't mean that everything's coming back up. You just have to be cautious. It's nice to have those things, but as I said, it's hard to make it, especially in those rest, that restaurant business, because you see it every day, where it's a nice place, but then after three months, you go by, there's a sign on the door that they close. So I would just, I would give that a couple more years on the tax issue and cut somewhere else. And as far as public safety, I've never had a problem with a police officer or fire truck coming to my home. I've never heard of people having a problem with them coming, but I've had excellent service. You know, I've always had excellent service. So, anyway, it's just something to take into consideration when you're thinking about taxes and where best to cut, to cut back at. I know there's bound to be some other places. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Good evening, the Honorable Councilman from City of Hampton.
Marty Meeks, City of Hampton, 110 East Main Street. I have lately got a primer on taxes, so, and been asking some questions. Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, is my understanding that this process was triggered by the increase in values? It's not any one person, but it's the state that requires this to be advertised and done?
If I could share this with you, I'm not a lawyer.
Yes, sir.
But it's real simple. The, if last year, for an example, 14.497 last year generated, throw the number out, 65 million, okay? In this coming year, they would calculate what millage rate, and this is done downstairs with the Tax Assessor and the Task Commissioner. They have these formulas that they go through, okay? This year, to generate, based on the new assessment, 12.995 would generate $60 million. Okay? Whether we like it or not, state law says, once that happens, the rollback is the difference between 14.497 and the new rate, or the rollback number, which would generate the same amount of money taxes this year as last year, would be 12.995. Now, when you do that, you have to have three hearings, public hearings, you have to call it an increase, okay? Now, if you leave it, if you leave the millage this year at anything less than 12.995, you have to advertise it as an increase.
Anything more?
Okay, ma'am?
Anything more?
Anything more than 12.995?
Oh, yeah, 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 more than 12.995. It has to be, you have to advertise it, and that's why we have the three hearings, because obviously we have at least a quorum up here that thought that they might want to increase the taxes. So that's where all these numbers come from.
Yes, sir. So it was like triggered by events. It's no one person that wants to raise taxes. There's not a commissioner or a group that wants to raise taxes. It's triggered by the events that have taken place.
Up front, I don't know what triggered it.
Okay.
I really don't. You'd have to ask each individual, because that didn't trigger it.
Another, another, just a couple of questions. I have, I know the budget is a guideline. Just because we have a budget of $122 million doesn't mean, or 127, whichever, doesn't mean we have that much money in the bank. I mean, that is a budget, that's how we, that's what we expect in revenues, and that's how we plan or sharing with the citizens how, what the plan is to spend that. Is the fund balance budgeted?
Let me explain, as I know, the fund balance.
Yes, sir.
The fund balance is an amount that's in the bank. It's cash money, it's available, okay? In this case here, in 2013, we had a fund balance of like, at the time we did the budget, which was in May, okay? The fund balance then was like, I'm gonna say 33 million, okay? Last year, this board gave a increase to Last year, this board gave a increase to the county employees, a 1.9 percent, that they hadn't had to raise in four or five years, okay? The insurance premiums went up 16 percent. And the board trying to find other ways to save the employees' monies on their prior year, the clock caught up with us, so the board decided we would pay the 1.9 million dollar increase totally. So we took 3 million dollars out of fund balance last year. Now, fund balance, as I understand it, is you can't use restricted funds. For an example, in some cities, some governments, some counties have this. For an example, if you got, at bond capacity, if you got bonds obligated, like 20 million dollars, and you've got 35 million dollars in fund balance, and you can only draw down the 15 million. Because the first 20 million is restricted. In our case, 35 million is unrestricted. Now, I think it's very appropriate to use this money, because last year, we took 33, and we dropped it down to 30, because we took three, okay? This year, same timeframe, we, the economy's picking up, so monies went back into the funds. And you have to keep in mind, we did the budget the same time this year as we did last year. So the time we did the budget in May, the fund balance was back up to 35 million. Now, the 35 million, we tapped in on 6 million. So basically, that drove, draw it down to 29 million, okay? But the 29 million, you figured it out, and I think I said this a while ago, but I'll repeat it. But right now, our budget cash outlay in a month is like 10 million dollars a month. So to get us through the lean months, which would be August, September, and October before the taxes come in, so that gave us 29 million. But really, it's more than that, because when we take in the 6 million out of fund balance, that's over 12 months. We don't just, July the first rolled around, we didn't just take 6 million out, okay? The half of the 6 million is coming out over six months. Because that's where, it's really coming out over 12 months, because everybody gets a 2 percent raise. The other part in January is the public safety people get another 2 percent. So the fund balance is, call it what you want to, to me, in my house, is savings.
Yes, sir. Maybe I should have phrased my question a different way. Where do the funds that go into the fund balance come from?
Comes out of a variety of issues. I would like, I think that would be best answered by the, probably the budget analyst, or maybe the financial director, if the board wanted him to come up and answer that. I can't answer that.
A companion question to that would be, how often are deposits made into the fund balance?
I can't answer that. I think we need to get the financial director up and answer that. I cannot answer that. If I could, I'd be the financial director, right? This is Fred O'Leary for the audience, he's the finance director.
As to where the present fund balance came from, this is what the fund balance has been over the past 10 years. And as you can see, it grew from 2001 to 2006. During that period of time, basically, what it was, is the, each year, there were excess funds collected in taxes, or not spent, if you would, to allow the fund balance to increase. And during that period of, you know, booming times, if you would, versus what was spent, that's how the fund balance was created during that period of time. And since then, as we've gone through the lean years, it's been reduced.
The contributions, for lack of a better term, have been reduced?
Yeah. And in some years, the use of fund balance was necessary to balance the budget.
So we have still been able to make contributions to the fund balance through these years?
In some years, yes, and some years, no.
Some years, no, there's not been any.
No, no.
Okay. Is there any way to determine what the actual expenses are in a fiscal year as compared to what the budgeted amount is? Let's say that this year, the, or last year, I believe, 2012, 13, the budget was 115 million 566. And then I would imagine, when departments need excess funds or need more funds, there's a budget amendment made to provide those funds. And in the year 13, fiscal year 13, 14, those numbers were shown as 116,993. So I imagine there was a couple of budget amendments made. But is there a way to find out how much was actually spent, and how much was actually contributed to the fund balance?
Yes. We have what's called a CAPER, Comprehensive Annual Plan Report, rather. It's about yeat thick, and it's about 150 pages, and it has the types of financial information. It shows the budget, how much was spent at the end of each fiscal year. It's an audit that's done, and those numbers are available. I can get you a copy of one if you would like.
Email would be great, yes, sir.
I can get you this year, I can email you this year's.
Okay.
I can get you the FY13 in an email. I do have that that way.
Yes, and that's, my thought was, since, and I'm not speaking for or against, I know you guys have a very difficult decision to make, and you were put in your positions because people thought you were the guys to handle it, and that you are able and capable to make the right decisions, and we're going to trust you to do that. But if we're going to borrow from the fund balance, and as we've been shown that contributions have been able to be made to the fund balance in recent years, though sometimes less, not as much, that might enter into some of your considerations. And thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you so much. Next. Does anybody else like to be heard at this time for any reason? Does any of the board members have any comments at this time? The only comment I'm going to make, because it generates phone calls, I'm prepared to vote for the millage rate to be 12.995. That's me. So if nobody else has any comments, I'm going to declare that the public hearing is over, and if somebody moved, we adjourn.
So moved.
Motion District Three? Second from District One, any further discussion? Only favor, raise your hand. So moved.